Twenty, Planning Commission meeting to order. Amber, can you do us a roll call, please?
My pleasure. Wendy Birmingham?
Here.
Robin Bridges?
Here.
Phil Chancellor?
Here.
Jana Jaeger?
Here.
Matt Lazenby?
Here.
Marcus Marshall?
Here.
Warren McCord?
Here.
Nonette Reese?
Here.
Bob Wrightenbaugh?
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I just want to kind of go over some of the ground rules. It kind of helps everybody understand what it is we're doing up here. The commission's going to be presented with an agenda item by the planning department, and after that, if the representative for that agenda item is interested, they can have something to say at that time. And then, I'll open a public hearing if it's appropriate. Some things do not get public hearings, some do, and that's going to be your opportunity to come forward and speak on the issue at hand. We want everybody to be heard, so feel free to come on, don't be shy, and we just ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. Once everyone has spoken, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then, we will deliberate and have a vote on that item. The commission's going to vote based on state laws, local laws, and the city's comprehensive plan 2030, and also for the general good of the community. Additionally, I would like to talk quickly about subdivision plats. Our role and our responsibility that are related to the approval of plats, we are the final authority in that case. By Alabama statute, a municipal planning commission such as ours is the final authority for the subdivision plats. And with regard to the plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by limitations contained in state laws, the city zoning ordinance, and subdivision regulations that this body has previously adopted. While public hearings are required on the preliminary plats especially, we welcome all comments from the public as we would in any other agenda item, but please understand that our authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements that are codified in laws, regulations that I've previously described. Okay, so, the first order of business is going to be citizens' communication. At this time, if anybody would like to speak on, there's two different categories that we're looking for comments if you're interested. Something that's not on the agenda at all, okay? That's one category. The other category is if you want to speak about anything that's on the consent agenda. We have a total of seven items. They include rezonings and a couple of final plats. So, anybody like to come forward and speak on those? All right, seeing no one, we'll move on. No old business, and so, we come to the consent agenda. I'd first just like to ask if anybody on the commission would like to pull any items from the consent agenda at this time?
I don't necessarily want to pull one from the agenda, but I'd like to ask a question about that, one of them, and if that's the case, I don't know how under our new Robert's Rules of Order how to make a negative motion to merely get off the consent agenda so I can ask a question. So, how do we handle that?
Let's just remove it. Yeah.
Then I move that we remove the Donahue Ridge Phase B annexation from the consent agenda.
Number, item number two?
Second.
You have a motion in second, all those, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Okay, that one is removed from consent agenda. Okay, the remaining consent agenda consists of the packet meeting minutes of 10 May, the regular meeting minutes of 13 May, foster annexation which is a recommendation to the city council for annexation of about five acres, PL 2021-00271. Then there's Quail Chase, which is number, item number three. Again, that's another annexation recommendation to the city council, that's PL 2021-00314. Item number four is Camden Phase Two. It's a final plat approval for a performance subdivision, and that is PL 2021-00313. Item number five is Sutherland Subdivision. It's a re-division of Lot One in Weber Farm South, which is also a final plat approval, and it's PL 2021-00319. Item number six is Donahue Ridge Phase Four, bond extension. That is PL 2021-00321. And the final one is Yarborough Farm Subdivision Pine Valley, which is a waiver to subdivision regulations, request for a waiver, and that's 2021-00329. Any comment from staff? And then, looking for a...
I move to approve consent agenda, and I appreciate the new yellow boxes on the bond extension.
Have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Okay, consent carries. Now, let's move back to Donahue Ridge Phase Eight is what we will have a look at. Let's see, who was the staff on that one? Mr. Kip, you want to kind of just give us a general idea of what's going on?
It's a request to annex approximately 9.99 acres just south of where a proposed extension of Cindy Lane would end. This is Phase Seven, that you see right above it, has not been platted yet, or has received final plat approval but has not been recorded. So, they're essentially proposing to extend the similar type of development and density single-family south of there. There are some floodplains that, floodplain and creek that go up in this portion of the property. They've, in earlier phases, they've included that. In this, in Phase Seven, they did not include it, and in this phase, they are proposing not to include it there either. Happy to answer any other questions, we don't have any issues with the annexation.
Well, my question is, is related to that property to the northeast that without being annexed at this time leaves a sliver of, albeit undeveloped, under undevelopable land to the east, but I would like to know, number one, is that strip of land in the same ownership as the property that we are about to annex? And if so, what is the plan? Will they eventually be bringing that into city limits, or are we going to create a little hole right there as they move down the...
It is owned by the same entity, I don't know what they intend to do with the land.
Is the representative here today?
Forsyth Group.
Yep.
Good evening, Brett Bass going with the Forsyth Group. That sliver of land, yeah, will eventually come in. The problem we run into is, as part of our performance zoning, when you get a lot, we would prefer that the lots go all the way there, but when you get a lot over 10,000 square feet in a conventional subdivision, you have to have more than 70,000 feet of road frontage. These lots are 65s. So, that's one thing, you know, the current, the way the current performance zoning, it discourages you from giving bigger lots in a conventional subdivision without giving it more road frontage. So, you know, if we had our druthers, we would just make the lots deeper, give them an acre, and it would be part of theirs. Now, to the northeast up there, there's a master detention pond that's behind Phase Seven, so that would stay separately, but these lots, it was really, we're just trying to loop it back in, and it was just an oversight. So, we'll probably bring it in within, when we bring in the next phase anyways.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I think that it would make sense to include the park that has the retention.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's, we were going to bring all that, we would bring all that in. We, to be honest with you, there's a breakdown in communication between what we submitted and the legal description that we got from our surveyor, so it was just kind of left out, so, but no, the intent of it is going to come in.
Is there anything that we have to do to reflect that on any kind of...
Well, I'm satisfied as part of the record, that satisfies me.
Okay, I'm good with that, too.
And whenever you're ready for a motion, I can make one.
All right. Yeah, we just need a motion now, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve PL 2021-00297. There's no staff comments, so, just to approve.
Second.
You have a motion in the second, is there a discussion? You want to put the motion there, Ms. McCord?
Pardon?
Were you good with that? You were going to, I thought you were going to give some...
Well, she made a motion.
Okay, that's what we're looking for, got it. Okay, so, I have a motion in the second, further discussion, no? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Okay, motion carries. Now, we're on to new business. So, the first item is Donahue Ridge Phase Eight rezoning, PL 2021-00298. Mr. Kip?
Yes, sir, this is a request from EFCO Three Incorporated, represented by Brett Bass and the Forsyth Group LLC. It's a request to rezone the property that you recommended for approval of annexation, 9.99 acres from rural to development district housing. The subject property, as I stated before, ends where Cindy Lane would extend and terminate. The future lane use of the property is low-density residential, which is consistent for the whole area, and their proposed development meets that density and uses. Staff is recommending approval, and there were not any major issues. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Bassman? Okay, this requires a public hearing, so at this time, if anybody would like to come forward and speak on this agenda item, please do. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item made on the agenda.
A second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion carries. Okay, item number nine, Donahue Ridge Phase Eight, same basic property. This is a preliminary plat approval, it's PL 2021-00318. Mr. Kip?
Same subject property, they are requesting a preliminary plat on 10 and a half acres to subdivide into a 31-lot conventional subdivision. Here's the proposed subdivision layout, with Cindy Lane extending south and a new road coming off of it. The proposed subdivision meets the subdivision regulations, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing as well. Anybody would like to come forward and speak on Donahue Ridge Phase Eight preliminary plat? Okay, I will close the public hearing, ask for questions, comments from this commission?
I have two. I would, I would like, it doesn't say it on here, approval with staff comments, because I do, I made a note during packet that we did not want to confirm the final plat until the recording was done of seven, of Phase Seven, and I didn't know if you wanted to put anything, Mr. McCord, about the floodplain being part of the city with the final plat?
Well, it's, it's, with the, no, I don't, it doesn't have to, if they've agreed, the next development, they will bring it in, and it's part of the public record.
Okay, so...
Okay. You have a motion?
I move to approve 2021-00318, Donahue Ridge Phase Eight preliminary plat with staff comments.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? Okay, I'd like to have a roll call for this, Amber, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, item number 10, Woodward Oaks PDD Amendment. It's PL 2021-00300. Mr. Howell?
Good evening. This case is a PDD amendment request to rezone the 236-acre Woodward Oaks Plan Development District to allow a different distribution of dwelling units, as well as the addition of 20,000 square feet of commercial space. It's located along Miracle Road between Farmville Road and North Donahue Drive in the Plan Development District up there, as you see on the map. This is a, this is the proposed, or excuse me, this is the current master development plan that's already been approved, and they are proposing the following. They'd like to add, they'd like to add approximately, they'd like to add five single-family homes and 39 townhomes, and then, 29 cottage housing development units, or, excuse me, they are going to reduce the single-family by five. And then, again, the 20,000 square foot commercial area on the northern side of the property. This change is entirely concentrated in the northern portion, up near Farmville Road. This is generally in response to the, to the development of the school and the fire station that's also been added up there. The developers requesting a, to, or an additional incentive on top of what they already have, they are allowed to, up to two incentives if approved per PDD. The existing incentive is to allow 10-foot setbacks for its units, for its dwelling units, in exchange for rear parking for the office and townhome uses which are already approved. And their second request as part of this, this case, is to allow 20% more allowable impervious surface ratio to the cottage, cottage housing development, which would bring them up from 50% allowable ISR to a maximum of 70%. Cottage housing developments are, this will be, this will be a little new for the, we have, we've had this, this use for quite some time available and allowable, but this will be one of the first that's, that's been introduced through a PDD. This, we have plenty of other condominium-style ownerships where it's all a single lot, you have lots of different structures that are under feasible ownership for the structure, but not the lot sizes themselves. This will be, this will be for both structure and lot, and so, creates a little bit different arrangement than we have typically seen, but it's, staff feels it's appropriate with the way they're concentrating in the area that they are, and we recommend approval with the, with the addition that the ISR incentive be limited to just the proposed cottage housing development. Have not received any correspondence in favor or against the proposal. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Is there a representative from the...
Can you answer the question?
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing, so if you'd like to come and speak about the Woodward Oaks PDD amendment, please do so. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, ask for questions, comment, or a motion from the commission.
Did we get clarification on the alleys, if they were public or private?
The alleys will be public, as I understand, so, that, a lot of those still has to be worked out through, of course, the development review team when we go through and take a look at the specifications they're providing with the width and the radiuses and technical details like that.
And so, you said the first incentive was the 10-foot setback for rear parking, and the second incentive is going to be an increase in the ISR?
I did, and I think I left off the exchange.
Yeah.
The exchange that they're providing will be improved open space. As you can see, they have quite a lot along the creek to the west of the property. They're going to be incorporating bike trails, which, as I understand, they are already working with camp to put those trails in.
Okay, and then, rear parking on the 20,000 square...
Well, that's already part of...
Already approved, okay.
Yep.
So, there is a, there is a plan and motion to make that open space accessible to the residents?
Oh, yes.
It already is.
Is it? Okay. Is it? Okay. I don't live up there, so...
And the townhomes will be, the townhomes will be similar, or they'll be the same designs that they have in the current townhouse area on the south of the property, which uses that rear parking.
Thanks, I just wanted to know what the exchange was.
You have a motion?
I'd move to approve item 10 on the agenda with the staff comments as just discussed.
Excuse me, I'm a seconded.
Okay, have a motion in the second, any further discussion on the motion? I'd like to have a roll call, Amber, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, item, that carries, so item number 11 is the Woodward Oaks commercial property. It's PL 2021-00320. Mr. Howell?
Yes, sir, so, this is the conditional use attached, request attached to the rezoning you just were, just acted on. Specifically, it's conditional use approval request for a slew of different uses for that 20-square-foot area that was added. Specifically, they are conditional, excuse me, institutional, road service, nursery, commercial support, and commercial entertainment uses. The complete list that you have are in your packet for each one of those different categories. The specific area that it would, that it would show, or excuse me, that would be in, or it's in the blue area on your map there, on the very, very top of the Plan Development District where it intersects with Front West Farmville Road. It's about 1.9 acres, and as a, as a development site, the permitted area that it has would be able to accommodate at a maximum five different kinds of uses. That's based on minimums, minimum lot areas that they would have to adhere to. So, out of that list, that's the most they would, they would be able to do. Staff recommends approval with, with one caveat, one of their requests for printing, publishing uses, we feel might not be appropriate in that area. It's, it's a little, it's a little deceiving with what you might think of as a printing and publishing use. A lot of people think like Kinko's or Copycat, those kind of smaller developments, however, the zoning ordinance in that particular case also includes things like the Craftmaster Production Facility that's off of North Dean Road. That particular kind of use would be allowable in this area based on the, it would take up the entire site based on its minimum size, but it would be allowable up there if it were to be included, the conditional use. So, staff is requesting that that be taken out.
Is that part of the comments?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, I think in the report it says...
Didn't see that.
Just says approval, but...
Oh, here we go, yeah.
Which could possibly mean a lot of like nighttime employee work and printing and things in the evening.
Potentially, as well as, as well as more of a wholesale delivery.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
I do have one question, I don't know if we need a, is there a hearing that we need to do first?
Yeah, there's going to be a hearing.
Okay, I'll wait till after the hearing.
Okay, all right, so this requires a public hearing, so if anybody would like to come and speak on this item, the Woodward Oaks commercial, please come forward now. All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Question?
The fast-food restaurant request, would that be potentially with drive-through as well, or would the, if it had a drive-through, would that become another conditional use request?
That would be, this would, so as a road service use, fast-food restaurants include those drive-throughs?
Okay.
And so, that would, if you were to prove that here, that would be allowed, it would not require to come back to you.
That's what I mean.
Is that so?
Like, this is like, they're getting these by right and don't have to come back in the forest.
Yeah, but I always thought the drive-through aspect of it was a conditional use. They've addressed it in the past.
And the
Not.
drive-throughs are typically part of the, uh, the zoning district that it's in, so like Evergreen Core, where you would see those kind of, those situations, that would come to you specifically for that use, not necessarily just because it's part of the, the greater development.
Okay.
I think the table of permitted uses says restaurant with drive-through over the road service.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected. Okay, uh, well, that leaves us with a, do we have a motion?
I move to approve twenty twenty-one three twenty, Woodward Oaks Commercial with all staff comments.
They have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazinby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're on to item number twelve, the Talheim Drive Subdivision. This is a preliminary plat approval for conventional subdivision, PL twenty twenty-one zero zero three one two. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, um, this is a preliminary plat request, um, from Blake Rice of Barrett Simpson, on behalf of Starko Group LLC, which are the property owners. Um, the subject properties are currently zoned LDD. This is the proposed, um, layout for the preliminary plat of twenty-two lots. They are conventional. And it's just an aerial showing the area as previously being undeveloped. Happy to answer any question. I believe the applicant is present for questions.
Mr. Rice?
And staff is recommending approval.
Okay.
Do you have an answer to the question?
Okay, thank you. Um, now, we had a discussion about this at packet. Uh, well, let's go ahead and have a public hearing first, and then we'll address that. So this does require a public hearing, so please come forward if you're interested in speaking on Talheim Drive Subdivision. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and then just ask about, we were talking about having some kind of a stubout, kind of action going on here, uh, in the final plat. So, what, what's become of that?
In the final plat?
Well, so, when we were having this discussion, we were gonna make a comment in this particular item that said, you know, the approval's gonna be s, subject to a stubout on the east side of this.
That isn't our engineering. It is a comment.
Is that a, oh, is that?
It is.
There we go. Okay, it's there. All right, that addresses my question. Further questions?
It's still open for public.
Public hearing's been closed, I'm sorry. It's been closed. Any questions come, motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number twelve with any and all staff comments.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any, uh, discussion on the motion? Okay, let's have a, uh, roll call, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazinby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before you go, the next item, I want to make sure that is clear to everybody, that the, that when, that motion includes the stubout to the, to the east as specified in this note. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Engineering comment, right?
All right, just want to make, make sure.
You're getting a nod, you don't have a problem.
No.
Thank you.
It feels secure.
Okay, item number thirteen is the Quail Chase Subdivision. This is PL twenty twenty-one zero zero three one five, and it is a preliminary plat for conventional subdivision. Ms. Endrickson?
This is a request from Blake Rice of Barrett Simpson, on behalf of Quail Chase Group, and the property is currently outside of city limits, but upon annexation, uh, which we saw earlier, it will be zoned rural. It is a preliminary plat, uh, request for a fifty-one lot conventional subdivision on approximately two hundred and seventy-one acres, and I believe Allison Fraser wanted to make a few comments on this plat.
Yeah, thank you. Regarding the stubouts, um, specifically on this one to the west, I have talked to the engineer and would just ask your consideration. We've got a staff comment about stubouts, but we do need to look at this a little more closely with the engineer, once they submit their DRT plans. There was about a sixty-foot, uh, elevation difference, um, so I need to make sure that, um, what we do is in the best interest long-term of the city. So, it is a comment, but if it doesn't show back up, I just want you to know that we've worked through that as part of the development review team.
Like when we see the final plat is what you're talking about?
It will be reflected on the final plat, whatever we come up with, yes. But he, we will do the stubout to the north, no problem.
Okay.
Okay. If it's removed, it would be because it's more of a hardship to the city to maintain that kind of a public.
Yeah, and I think there's a little hard stuff up there called granite, so, we see the, the working bed.
So should that be included in the motion, that the stubout to the west, if feasible as determined through the development review process?
I would be okay with that.
Okay. I didn't want it to put the whole burden on, on staff, without being clear that we agreed to that.
Okay, this requires, also requires a public hearing, so at this time, I open the public hearing.
Sorry, I just wanted to make one comment about the block length. There is a staff comment, um, about that, and that will be, um, addressed via waiver, um, before final plat.
What was the?
The what? Fourteen hundred feet.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay. As I was saying, we'll open the public hearing this time. Uh, anybody would like to come forward and speak on the Quail Chase Preliminary Plat, please do so. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for any more questions or a motion.
I do have a question. Optimal boundary, where is that if we back out?
I don't know where it ends, but this property is within the optimal.
It's right on the edge.
I, I knew it had to be on, like, the west side, right?
Yeah.
Of, okay. Hey, that's all happy.
A motion?
I'll move to approve with all staff comments.
Second.
Pending. The west connectivity stubout, as determined via DRT.
Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Second.
Motion is second. Any, uh, discussion about the motion? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazinby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number fourteen, Mem's Trail, Eleventh Edition, Phase B, PL twenty twenty-one zero zero three one seven, another preliminary plat approval for performance residential this time.
Yes, this request comes to you, um, from Brett Baslin of Forsight Group, on behalf of Clayton Properties Group. Um, it is a request for preliminary plat approval of fifty-seven performance lots, so fifty-six single-family and one open space, and this would be the Mem's Trail Eleventh Edition, Phase B. Uh, it's currently zoned LED with the Plan Development District overlay. Um, we've not received any communication regarding this, and staff's recommending approval. Here's the, um, lot layout proposed, and an aerial showing the undeveloped property.
Okay, thank you. Question? All right, this requires a public hearing. Um, so anybody would like to speak on Mem's Trail Eleventh Edition, Phase B, PL twenty twenty-one zero zero three one seven, please come forward. Hope she's not trying to come in and, okay. Um, seeing no one, I'll close that public hearing, and ask for any further questions or a motion.
I think it's unique to see a preliminary plat without one cul-de-sac. It's a little different. I'd make a motion to approve.
Right. Have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All right, uh, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazinby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The last item is Ludlum and King Office. This is PL twenty twenty, zero zero three one zero. Mr. Howell?
Yes, sir. So, this is the conditional use attached, request attached to the, the rezoning you just were, uh, just acted on. Specifically, it's conditional use approval request for instit, for a slew of different uses for that twenty square foot area that was added. Um, specifically, they are conditional, or excuse me, institutional, road service, nursery, commercial support, and commercial entertainment uses. The complete list that you have are in your packet, uh, for each one of those different categories. The specific area that it would, that it would show, or excuse me, that would be in, or it's in the blue area on your map there, on the very, uh, very top of the Plan Development District, where it intersects with, um, west Farmville Road. It's about one in, one point nine acres, and as a, um, as a development site, the permitted area that it has would be able to accommodate at a maximum five different kinds of uses. Uh, that's based on minimums, minimum lot areas that they would have to adhere to. So, out of that list, that's the most they would, they would be able to do. Um, staff recommends approval with, uh, with one caveat. One of their requests for printing publishing uses, uh, we feel might not be appropriate in that area. It's, it's a little, uh, it's a little deceiving with, uh, what you might think of as a pulp, printing and publishing use. A lot of people think, like Kinko's or Copycat, those kind of smaller developments. However, the, the zoning ordinance in that particular case also includes things like the Kraftmaster Production Facility, that's off of Northeast Road. Um, that particular kind of use would be allowable in this area based on the, it would take up the entire site based on its minimum size, but it would be allowable up there if it were to be included in the conditional use. So, staff is requesting that that be, uh, taken out.
It's part of the comments, right?
Is that part of the comments?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, uh, I think in the report it says-
Didn't see that.
Just says approval, but-
Oh, here we go, yeah.
Which could possibly mean a lot of, like, nighttime employee work and printing and things in the evening.
Potentially, uh, as well as, as, as well as more of a
Industry.
wholesale delivery.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Any of your questions?
All right, thank you.
I do have one question. I don't know if we need a, is there a hearing that we need to do first?
Yeah, there's gonna be a hearing.
Okay, I'll wait till after the meeting.
Okay. All right, so this requires a public hearing, so if anybody would like to come and speak on this item, the Woodward Oaks Commercial, please come forward now. All